Good afternoon. Welcome to the July 2, 2020 Special Meeting of the Slay County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here. I ask that you please stand if able and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think you all know while we're here to discuss the Governor's Executive Order regarding the wearing of face coverings or masks in public. We're going to start off with our action items first, correct, Phil? And Jamie, action item number one.
RFA 186-20, Consideration of Governor's Executive Order 20-52 with Philip Smith Haines, County Administrator.
All right. Good afternoon, Phil.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So as the Chairman mentioned, we are here specifically to talk about one item this evening, which is the Governor's Executive Order 20-52, which was signed earlier today. And I'd just like to start by going through the executive order so everybody is clear on what the requirements of it are. The Governor's Order, you know, contains all the findings, the whereas clauses, but the first actionable part is requirements for individuals. This requires that individuals are responsible for covering their mouth and nose with a mask or other face covering when they are inside or in line to enter any indoor public space, and we'll get to the definition of that here in a second, when they're obtaining services from various folks, including healthcare sectors, hospitals, pharmacies, laboratories, dental offices, that sort of thing, when they are waiting for or riding on public transportation, including a taxi, a private car service, or a ride-sharing vehicle, and when they are outdoors in public spaces and unable to maintain a six-foot distance between individuals, not including individuals who reside together, with only infrequent or incidental moments of closer proximity. So basically, the requirements of Executive Order 20-52 apply to folks when they are inside or when they are outdoors and unable to maintain that social distance. There are also requirements for businesses, which is the second operative part of Executive Order 20-52, and those requirements are that businesses make all their employees, customers, visitors, members, or members of the public wear a mask or other face covering when employees are working in any space visited by customers or members of the public, regardless of whether anyone from the public is present at that time. Employees are working in any space where food is prepared or packaged for sale or distribution to others. Employees are working in or walking through common areas such as hallways, stairways, elevators, or parking facilities. Customers, members, visitors, or members of the public are in a facility managed by the business or organization, or employees are in any room or enclosed area where other people, except for individuals who reside together, are present and unable to maintain a six-foot distance except for infrequent or incidental moments of closer contact. So that would require that businesses make their employees wear masks most of the time when they are dealing with the public or in a space where the public could be present, and that customers are in their facility. There are then a number of exceptions to those requirements, and this is where the order gets a little complicated. So the first exception is for young children. The second is for folks with a medical condition, mental health condition, or disability that prevents wearing a face covering. The third is for the folks who are hearing impaired and need to be able to see someone's mouth to communicate. The fourth is for persons for whom wearing the face covering would create a risk related to their work, as determined by regulations of some nature. Next is persons obtaining a service involving the nose or face for which temporary removal of the covering is necessary to perform the service. So you could think of that like, you know, a dentist's office, for example. Next is folks who are seated in a restaurant or other food or beverage establishment while they are eating or drinking, provided they maintain a six-foot social distance between individuals, not including individuals who reside together or are seated together with only infrequent or incidental moments of closer proximity. So of course, that would be, you know, typically in a restaurant, you would not need to wear the mask while you have the food on the table, but if you get up to go to the restroom or something like that, you would be required to wear the mask. Then there are even more exceptions, including athletes who are engaged in an organized sports activities that allows them to maintain a six-foot distance with only infrequent or incidental moments of closer proximity. The example that was provided for that would be something like a baseball game where, you know, folks are typically separated a little bit. Persons who are engaged in an activity that a professional or recreational association, medical association, or other public health-oriented entity has determined cannot be safely conducted while wearing a mask. And there was some discussion this afternoon about basketball games, for example, and whether basketball games would fit under the first exception or the second exception. Persons engaged in an activity or event that is held or managed by the Kansas Legislature, and persons engaged in a court-related proceeding held or managed by the Kansas Judiciary. And then finally, persons engaged in any lawful activity during which wearing a face mask is prohibited by law. So I said we'd talk a little bit about definitions. So a mask or other face covering is defined as covering the nose and mouth and secured to the head with ties, straps, or loops over the ears, or wrapped around the lower face, allowed to be made of a variety of synthetic and natural fabrics, ideally with two or more layers, could be factory-made, made by hand, or improvised from household items. And public space includes any indoor or outdoor space or area that is open to the public, does not include private residential properties or private offices or workspaces that are not open to customers or public visitors. The question then arises about how this is to be enforced. And so the order says that "as currently permitted pursuant to state law, the Attorney General, county attorneys and district attorneys enforcing this order should use their discretion and consider the totality of the circumstances as they determine appropriate enforcement actions." I was a little curious why there was no mention of local law enforcement in the order, and then was reminded that Section 36 of House Bill 2016, which was passed in the special legislative session this summer, repealed the criminal penalties associated with violation of executive orders, and makes this a civil enforcement, and the potential fine is up And the effective date of the order would be essentially midnight tonight, 12:01 a.m. tomorrow, and it will remain in force until rescinded or until the statewide state of disaster emergency is expired, which I believe is currently slated for September unless it is subsequently extended. So that is what Executive Order 20-52 says, and I'd be happy to try and field any questions about that. We also have our county counselor in the room. He has reviewed the order, and if there are no questions, we also have our health officer as well who could address some things.
Okay. I think that pretty well gives you somewhat of a partly cloudy picture of what the Governor has said. At this time, I think I would like to have Jason Tiller, Director of Slay County Health Department, give us an overview or views or what his situation would be.
Yes, sir. So, good evening, Commissioners.
Do you want me to bring up that?
Yes, go ahead and bring up the first one. So through any of our decisions, we have tried to use data to help drive those decisions, which I've mentioned before has generally been case count numbers, hospitalizations, hospital resource use, and deaths. And looking back right now, what you're looking at first is April, and of course, at the beginning of things, we were seeing a pretty steady but still a low incidence of disease. If you move ahead to May. May, I think, may have given us a bit of a pause or a false sense, maybe, I'm not quite sure, but then you move to June, and June takes on a whole different picture. So using that data, right now, and you can flip ahead to the July one real quick if you want to, Phil, you can see the case counts there, too. Right now, as of about an hour ago, we are at 140 cases total since the beginning, or 29th of March. We have 70 recovered, one hospitalized, and two deaths still. 67 active cases that we're working on, but if you'll flip back to June real quick. But recognized since June 17, which was two days before we phased out when we started seeing this increase, we've seen 103 cases since then. I think that the science shows, and I'm not going to argue with the science on it, that masks, along with social distancing, hand washing, staying home when you're sick, are all effective measures at reducing the incidence of this disease in the community. Additionally, you know, many of the stay-at-home measures were intended to, what we were saying back then, flatten the curve on hospital resource use and ICU beds, and we have still maintained that. And so I think in order to maintain that, we've got to do something a little bit different than what we've continued to do. We've always talked about strong recommendations for mask wear, strong recommendations for washing hands, strong recommendations for social distancing. And I don't know if the message has just been said over and over so many times that it has, that we all have developed some sort of COVID fatigue or just not hearing it anymore. But I don't think that the biggest issue I have with this executive order is not so much the wearing of masks, is the, fundamentally, is the mandate that is put out without some sort of ability to enforce it or consequence. I have often said that people need to take responsibility for their actions as well as accountability, and in this order, that is probably our biggest challenge. There are a lot of exemptions, but I think that we do need to either look at potentially adopting all or part of this, or as a community, finding a better way to really enforce that message that mask use is not just something that we say and we talk about, but that we need to do more often. There's a couple of, and then the other thing is in the attempt to make an order that is as broad as this is, and its exemptions makes it, and in its requirements, you know, they're making it broad enough to try and cover the whole state of Kansas. I think it makes a challenge for us at this level to try and work with. I feel that in some ways that this may put a heavy burden on businesses to now be the bad guy about whether somebody wears a mask in their business or not, without some sort of way to be able to enforce this. And maybe that will, you know, improve the case counts that, across the state, that eventually, you know, this may not be needed anymore. The advisory council met on Tuesday and discussed this issue, and their general support was for a mask mandate, or to support this mask mandate, or support the wearing of masks in the public and in public spaces.
Okay. Before I ask you for the official staff recommendation, I think I want to hear from the, we all want to hear from the public at this point. There are two options here before us, and number one is that we go forward with Governor Kelly's executive order, or that we amend that with a public health order of Slay County Commission, which would be different. So at this time, I would ask whoever wishes to speak to come forward. You will be limited to three minutes, and we're going to strictly enforce that. We would ask your name and your address. Also, if someone is quoting the same statistics or whatever that the person before you has just spoke, we ask that you please, you know, limit that. So, all right, kick it off, Laney.
Can you hear me with my mask on?
If we can hear you, yeah.
You can.
I can hear you right now, yes.
Okay. Well, I appreciate hearing your comments, Jason. That was very pleasing. I just want to say that it's time to go deep and come from, in making the decision, come from a place of integrity, good conscience, and good common sense. The numbers, as he, Jason, said, has gone up, and across the nation, I read where they are looking at 50,000 new cases a day. And I know it's hard to be in the community and not feel the freedom just to go out, have a cup of coffee, or a beer, or a meal, and know that you have to at least go in and out with masks, but I think it's important to look at the motives for not following recommendation. Is it just a strong ego, or is it political, or just lack of knowledge, or is it from a business sense? I don't know. I think we all just need to do a deep self-examination before we think we don't need masks. Many of our citizens are immune-suppressed, and I need to say, I hate wearing this mask. I have a Kleenex because it makes my nose drip. I get a scratchy throat, so I have a cough drop when I have a mask on. But out of respect and honor for Slay County citizens, I wear a mask, not just for myself but those too. So we need to work together out of honor and respect for one another. I've been a nurse for over 50 years, and a good deal of those years, or a number of those years, were what, was working in two different public health departments in other cities or towns of the state. So I know of public health stuff, and so for me, it's just a no-brainer. I was, I've not eaten out yet. I haven't gone in any place to eat out yet because I'm leery. I did finally find courage to go through a drive-through the day because I was craving an ice cream cone. I let that urge get to me, and so I went through and ordered the ice cream cone and went around to get it. The girl handed me a ice cream cone. I have to say, she had a napkin wrapped around the bottom, but she was holding it this close to her face, no mask, no gloves. I almost said, I'm sorry, I won't take that. Kind of wish I had it now. I do plan to talk to the manager of that place and see what their plan is. So I'm strongly encouraging you to abide by the recommendations of the Governor and require the mask as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm assuming there will be someone else who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Commissioners. Joseph J. Rubino, 1505 East Republic Avenue, Salina, Kansas. Public mask wearing is highly recommended by every major health organization in the country and around the world. This includes the Center for Disease Control, the World Health Organization, the National Institute of Health, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and every major research university around the world. Study after study shows that public mask wearing significantly slows the spread of the virus, and study after study shows that this saves lives. Without a doubt, science and medicine overwhelmingly supports public mask wearing as public health policy. Nationally, the rapid spread of COVID-19 is alarming. The United States is breaking records every day. We are approaching 3 million infections and 130,000 deaths. A recent study showed that in 16 states without a public mask mandate, the infection rate has increased by 84% over the last three weeks. In the same time period, 11 states with mask-wearing mandates have decreased their infection rates by 25%. In Kansas, infection rates are also increasing with over 400 new cases and eight deaths yesterday, and over 900 new cases last weekend. Numbers don't lie. COVID-19 infections are rapidly increasing nationwide and statewide. And here in Slay County, our infection numbers have increased dramatically, over 300% in the last four weeks. We have now confirmed cases from a soccer game, a bar, an industry, a school, a gym, and a funeral gathering. Contact tracing is becoming more difficult. Statistically speaking, increased testing cannot solely account for this huge statistical I believe this spike in infection directly correlates with Phase 3 on June 5 and Phase Out on June 18, since June 18, from 38 to 140 cases in two weeks. This looks like a direct correlation that, from my perspective, has been accompanied by a much lower percentage of mask-wearing in public. Mask gatherings plus no masks equals COVID-19 spread. It's that simple, and the scientific and medical community overwhelmingly support this theory. I strongly encourage this commission to support Governor Kelly and the KDHAE's mandate for Kansas to wear a mask in public. Do not let this spread out of control. Do not let deaths begin the mount. Be proactive, not reactive. Enforce this mandate. Public mask wearing will significantly slow the spread of this virus, it will keep businesses open, and it will save lives. Thank you for your time and consideration, Commissioners. Many blessings.
Thank you, Mr. Rubino. And would someone else wish to speak, please? Please step to the podium.
Hello, Commissioners. It's good to be here. I'm the Reverend Dr. Paul Hall, and I want to speak to you on to, from two perspectives as a minister, and which I have been for 25 years. And 25 years I was part of that, an environmental health engineer, including I had my own consulting business for 11 years. I want to speak in favor of wearing masks, and obviously, and I think all kinds of search talks about how masks are effective in terms of preventing the spread of viruses, particularly the COVID virus. I, as an engineer, actually spent working, time working with hazardous waste, and know the effectiveness of masks and personal protective equipment. And also, I was a hospital chaplain, and I, during my ministry time, and I had infection control training, and I know the effectiveness of masks in that kind of situation. And I want to say that masks, if there's any question about the effectiveness of masks, I would say that that's not in dispute from, at least from my experience and training. What I would like to do, however, I put together, as an engineer, engineers always love graphs. If I could present these?
No, we'll ask you to stand. You can leave them with the clerk over here, and we would be happy to take a look at them, but we're asking you not to approach.
So that includes essentially the graph, and also some chart for the testing that's occurring in Kansas, and the number of cases that are, have been found, and that's from Johns Hopkins University. And the other is a letter from a colleague of mine, the Reverend Dr. Diane Miller, who has written about her support of masks. As a clergy person, I would say that we have a duty to help our neighbor and ourselves. And I think some people who have looked at that say we have a duty not only to our neighbor but to ourselves, too. So I think that it's part of being a responsible citizen to encourage people with the power of a county and the government to do things that are going to protect the public health. You know, I've heard some people say, for example, "Well, you're taking away my freedom to choose." But I want to make this point. We have restrictions on all kinds of freedoms. You know, I can't take a Corvette and drive it 130 miles on an hour on Interstate 70, and that's to protect other people. And the way I see it is that's what the mask is. And the way I see it is that's what the mask is, is for, is to protect ourselves and other people. And one final point I'd like to make is, as a clergy person, I have seen the power of community and the power of values carried through a community to change how we act and our behavior. And I think as a community and as a county, through our own individual, taking our own individual responsibility and encourage other people to use masks may not be, we can address this problem to a significant degree without having to go.
Sir, you're significantly over the times, so we appreciate you. You dropped a piece of paper there. Thank you very much for your comments.
Good evening. My name's Erin Schmodder. I live at 1682 North Burma, Seline County, Salina, Kansas. I'm sorry, I'm ill-prepared. I just found out about this meeting like half an hour before it started. I come today to support not forcing us to wear masks, not because I'm some young person who doesn't care about other people's freedoms, or I don't care about other people's health and safety, but because I am a young person who is immunosuppressed because I have had chemo, and I still think people deserve their right to choose whether they wear a mask or not. If we're looking at specifically the count, yes, the count might be rising, but the death count is not. The mortality rate is starting to look more of that on the flu. We're taking more numbers now, we're getting more death, or we're getting more counts of COVID, but the death rate isn't showing that it's any more contagious than the flu in anyone under the age of 65. I have three small children, and I understand that there's an exception for them, but there's no way they're going to wear a mask, and they're rubbing their grubby little hands and coughing and sneezing all over everything. If they're not forced to wear a mask, I don't see any reason why I should. As somebody who can control licking things and sneezing all over things, I don't think we should. Not only that, if you are concerned about not wearing a mask or other people not wearing a mask, then don't go out in public. There are so many things like Grubhub and ClickList and Walmart's Pickup. You can just drive up, and they put your stuff in your car. You don't even have to get out. So if you're afraid of the world in this case, then don't go out. But when we look at it, our winter's a mask going to end. Flu season's coming up in the fall. If our mortality rate for people over the age of 65 is looking like a lot higher, yes, but for people under that age, it's not looking higher than the flu. So are we going to be forced to wear masks for the rest of forever? I got both influenza A and influenza B this year and felt like I was going to die, but I would not make somebody else wear a mask on the off-chance that I might get those because that's not fair to them, and it's not fair to anybody else who's forced to wear something that they don't want to wear. I also have asthma, so I'm probably not going to wear one anyway, and would probably fall under the exemption. But anybody can claim those sort of things. Like, I carry an inhaler with me, so I follow under, under an exemption, so I don't have to wear one anyway? Like, we started putting so many exemptions anyway. I don't see how we can rightly say everybody is forced to wear masks, except for A, B, C, D, all the way to what? Y. So Z has to wear a mask. Okay, so somebody pulls me over, I'm not wearing a mask in my car, and I understand maybe that's not considered a public space. Sorry, I'm tangening so much now. Anyway, I don't think it's right to try and force other people to wear masks, especially in the age group under 65 that are not at risk any more than the flu. It's never going to end, they're just going to come up to flu season, and we're going to go, oh, it's flu season, you got to wear a mask now because the mortality rate is also dead. Hi, I lost my grandfather to the flu last year. We had 59,000 cases of the flu in the United States. That happens every year. We don't wear masks. So I do not support wearing a mask, and I think we should look at it on long-term. Long-term COVID's not going away. Until we get a vaccine, which God only knows when that's going to be, what are we going to do? Force everyone to wear masks? Yes, the count's going up, but the mortality rate is going down, the deaths per number of people. So my time is up. I will let you go, but I do not support mask-wearing.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Next.
Clark Sanders, 2096 Leland Way, Salina, Kansas. I do not support mandatory mask-wearing. If you wish to wear a mask, have at it. I was, back in February, before this whole thing blew up with the COVID, I was in the hospital with the flu. There, anybody who came into my room, there was, they were required to wear a mask. There was one person in my room who was not required to wear a mask. That was me. I say that to say that we've heard this said over and over and over, that my mask protects you from me. Well, I'm in the hospital, and I was the only one who wasn't required to wear a mask, and I had the flu. So I question whether that's true. I know this for certain. A one-size-fits-all approach, like this governor seems to be hell-bent on having, is not correct. Last time I checked, and it was two or three days ago, Lincoln County had no cases. Why should a county with no cases be subject to this mandate? Why should anybody be subject to this mandate? In fact, a while back, the legislature decided that the governor was out of control and returned control to the local counties. That you folks, you have the, you have the authority to rescind, veto, whatever the correct term is, this order. A one-size-fits-all, really, the reality of that is a one-size-fits-noone. I strongly encourage you not to vote, not to have this requirement. Relative to the pastor's comment, Pastor, you can drive a Corvette down the interstate at 130 miles per hour. What you can't do is do that without consequences. What are the consequences for this? What are the penalties? How strictly are they going to be enforced? If they're not going to be enforced, why aren't they going to be enforced? This makes no sense. If you want to wear a mask, knock yourself out. If you own a business and you want to require masks to do business, to enter your business, that's great. That's fine. Mandates are not about freedom, and we should be about freedom in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Anyone else?
I'll say a little bit of ditto.
Your name, sir?
No, I'm sorry. Todd Hurst, 610 State Street. I'll say a little bit of ditto to the last two. As far as statistics, I won't go over those again, but my question on this is on enforcement. I've read of numerous law enforcement agencies that said they're not going to enforce this. So I don't know what the enforcement process would be. Mr. Tillerson mentioned that it pretty much is making the business people the bad guy. And I do happen to pastor a church, and that puts a lot of weight on me and on our board, you know, to try to meet people at the door, or whatever it is. I know that we serve a wide range of people, and there's going to be some that are going to wear the mask, whether you mandate it or not, and there are some that are not going to wear the mask, no matter if there's a policeman at the door. And so if that enforcement falls upon me as pastor, I really, I really wonder, you know, how that's going to work. You know, if a policeman or someone like that is not going to enforce it, then why should, why should I have to do that on my own? So that was my question.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Downey. I live at 517 South Marymount, and all I wanted to say is, with a virus with a 98% survival rate, I feel like it should be personal choice on whether you want to wear a mask or not. And another thing I want to touch on is, we're still allowing abortion to continue on, and we're worried about human lives and saving lives, but yet there's over a million lives taken every year due to abortion, but they're still allowing.
We want this to be related to COVID.
I know. I'm just saying it is kind of related because we're worried about human lives here. So, I mean, if we're worried about human lives, why are we still allowing that to continue? Anyways, 98% survival rate should be choice or not choice to wear a mask. I am not for wearing a mask.
Thank you.
I'm not going to touch the podium because some unmasked people are touching it. It's going to be hard, but I'll try to do it. Commissioners, how are you?
Your name, sir?
Sorry, David Norland, Sexway Republic. Thank you, Bob. I couldn't resist following Clark because I have a fond place for Clark in my heart. We've both been in broadcasting a long time. But I wanted to raise a little bit of broadcast history with him, which I think is relevant. When there was another new phenomenon that appeared about the 1920s called AM radio, there was no regulation. People were free to broadcast on any frequency with any content at any time for whatever reason. Pretty soon, even business people who wanted to have a decent means of communicating with people because they were being run over by other stations insisted that there be regulatory authority imposed, and there was. And both for Clark's benefit and mine, since I taught broadcasting for a long time, that was a good thing. Which comes to the responsibility of all agencies and governmental entities. The governor has courage to do that. You are being asked to help enforce it. I think it would be irresponsible not to do so. Mr. Tiller, as noted, mentioned the concern about business people, and the pastor mentioned pastoral congregations and having to ask their people to do that. The thing is, if you have an atmosphere in which people know they are required to do that, and also know that there will be some consequences, but hello, it's not criminal. We know that law enforcement will sort of select, as they already do, who is prosecuted and who is not. Prosecute is not the right word because the only penalties are civil, not criminal. So I don't anticipate the kind of mass uprising, or even masked uprising, I couldn't resist that, that you, that might be anticipated here. It's difficult to sandwich all of this in. Commissioners, I sent you, and I hope you got, an item from CNBC quoting Goldman Sachs, pointing out that the long-term requirement of masks is much better than not requiring them because we are not talking about shutting down businesses, and we might be without masks if this continues. By the way, being one of the 2% that might die from this, I'm not comforted by the 98%. And some of you are in the same category, you're a little bit older than, like I am. So I think that would be one of the main things. Again, there are so many things to say, but again, I do think it's irresponsible not to uphold the governor's order as I see it, what's on the agenda. And I want to mention that I think we should have heard the staff report beforehand, what's their recommendation before people spoke, because we're operating kind of blind here. My understanding from the pack is, it's either we'll enforce it or we won't. Seems to me that's the vote. You should vote to enforce it. You're responsible for that, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Haley Helsor, 1008 East Elm Street. I just want to say, everybody's talking about these 98% survival rate. We don't know the long-term effects of this. There are people sitting in hospitals when their blood is drawn, but it is like sludge coming out of them. People can have clotting problems long-term. PTSD, depression, cognitive impairment, and anxiety due to the trauma, just being treated for COVID-19. And these are long-term effects. This isn't something that's just, oh, yeah, I survived. I may have survived today, but I may not 20 years from now because of what's happening today. And while we're, we're saying, you know, we can maintain six-foot distance, great, maintain six-foot distance, but if you can't, just put a mask on. We're inconvenienced every single day. I have to mow my lawn. Guess what happens when I don't mow my lawn? Somebody with the city drives down, they issue me a ticket and say, hey, you got to mow your lawn. First, it's a warning. It's a warning, and then it's probably another warning, and then I get issued a fine per day that I don't comply. Seat belts were another example of inconvenienced. Yeah, it sucks to wear this mask. It sucks to wear a seatbelt. We can't get in our cars and drive while drunk because it's for the safety of other people. And it's not, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask people to cover their face. And in those orders, she did state that, you know, we can even do it with a bandana. I know my clients, and as a business owner, I don't believe that I'll be inconvenienced. We already put up a sign a month ago, says you have to wear a mask to come in. Nobody has complained. Everybody's had something in their car that they can throw over their face, and if they don't, I have a box that looks just like that on my desk, and they put it on. If they can't, if they have to be close to be. However, we've maintained the seating, you know, you can sit six feet away from me, and I don't care. But when you're so close to me and we have to sign these documents together, just, you know, do me, do me a solid and just put a mask on. That's all that's being asked of people. It's inconvenient. I hate wearing this thing. Absolutely hate it. But I made it fun with some sequins and whatever. We can't be, you know, allergy season is coming up. Everybody's going to be coughing. My son is already coughing. He's already sniffing. Who's to say that these people just have simple allergies, or they think they have simple allergies, and they're out gallivanting around doing god knows what, and they're sneezing and coughing all over everybody because they chose that it was their personal freedom? Also, I wanted to state, you know, we've, we talked about the ambiguities. I think that's what's, the reason why it was so ambiguous, was to bring it to county commissioners to enhance that, and maybe, you know, justify it or give a better explanation in order to enforce that. And enforcement's going to suck, but, you know, it's a fine. It's a civil matter. It's not criminal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Spicer, 2515 Argon Drive. But I'm here as the Executive Director of Salina Community Theater. I'd like to move from the macro to the micro. We would like you to consider, if you're going to approve the governor's measure, to include the performing arts in the athletics exemption. If we invite you to come and take a dance class and see how athletic that is. Equally, performing onstage and projecting and singing require the same control of inhalation and exhalation that I think created the exemption for athletics. So if you do approve this, please allow us to continue to teach the way that we need to teach without, without masks. We have spent the last nine weeks building different protocols for cleaning before and after each class, sanitizing hands, taking temperatures. We are ready to move forward in a safe and sane way, either way that you decide, but if you do embrace this, we hope that you would include an exemption for the performing arts along with the athletics. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Commissioners, I'm Dr. Bob Kraft, 305 South Estates Drive. I'm the CEO and Chief Medical Officer of Salina Family Healthcare Center, our local community health center. Our practice has been enforcing a mask requirement for everybody in the building since on that curve it went to four and four. And it's my medical opinion that that's when the mask mandate should have happened. And we're already about two weeks behind. So I stand in support of the governor's mandate, and if we do not change the behavior some way, that curve will continue to go up, hospitalizations will start to follow, and deaths will follow. And I urge you to stop that. Thanks.
Thank you, Doctor.
Steve Klein, 1417 Springfield Street. And it's awful odd that the governor would do this right before Independence Day, when she had plenty of time to consider this before. It's an inconvenience for us, and we're a free country. If someone wants to wear a mask, that protects them and me. Say you want to wear a mask, that would protect you, and since I have a healthcare condition with breathing, that would be detrimental to my health to have a mask on. It's still a free country. We should be able to make a decision what we're going to do with our lives, and not have the government tell us what to do. This, the people fought and died for our freedoms, and we need to respect that. And I don't feel this governor's respecting us whatsoever. It's a strong statement. It's people's health. I understand that, and I want to be considered with this thing. But we still are a free country, and that's what we fight for, and that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else before we bring it back?
Jeff Bennett, 1552 East Waterwell Road. I'm sorry, I didn't have anything prepared, but I do a lot of research, a lot, way more than most people. And ever since this thing started, the numbers have been skewed. And if you guys work with computers or software, stuff like that, or anything, really, they have a term that's called crap in. have a term that's called crap in, crap out. If you don't put good information in, you're not going to get good information out. Okay, let's start with your numbers over here in your graph. Now, there at the low part of the graph, how many tests were they doing at that time? I'm just going to pick numbers, I don't know exact numbers, but just to give a picture, okay? Let's say they're doing 10 a day, and that's when your rate was very low. And then all of a sudden, they kick the tests into high gear. Now, I don't, again, I don't know the exact numbers on this, but let's say they're doing only 50 a day, but it's probably more than that. Well, then the numbers go up. Well, if they'd been doing 50 a day back then, those numbers might have been up here. And they might have been coming down, but we don't know because it was crap in, crap out. Okay? The hospitals, some of them, I know in small communities that are very near here, losing a million dollars a month because they have, the place is empty. And so, their pay plan is that if they have, someone comes in and they get diagnosed with COVID-19, the hospital gets $13,000. If they put them on the ventilator, they get $39,000. Okay? What's their natural, oh, and the rules are, as far as diagnosing, is let's say if somebody dies, if your doctor told you you had stage IV cancer and you had two weeks max to live, and you died a week later, the rule, the way it was written is, if, they don't have to test him for COVID to prove it, they just say, if they suspect that COVID-19 might have had something to do with his death, it should be written as a COVID-19 death. You noticed during this time, nobody died of anything else. COVID cured every other disease because people were only dying of COVID-19. And so, you had your huge numbers, okay? And you look at the places where the huge numbers were, you had New York, and you had Washington State, and you had wingnuts that, I'll take it, you had people that were sending sick people to old folks homes. Who dreamed that up? You know? If you just had the standard flu, that kills a lot of people every year. Why would you send people with any kind of flu to an old folks home? So, the death rates were high. I think it started out in Washington, it was 44 people in one retirement home that died from it. In New York, man, they were pumping them into those places, and I've talked to nurses that were working up there.
Jeff, I'll ask you to wrap it up because you're past the three minutes, so.
Anyway, my main thing is, okay, the numbers are skewed. I think it's an overreach of government to try to tell me I've got to wear a mask. I respect, we should be having this conversation that, should we allow people with masks into our business, which I think we should, and I respect their right. If they're scared of this thing, wear your mask, you know?
Okay, I'll ask you to.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Someone else wish to step forward and give another comment? If not, we'll move forward here a little bit. Excuse me, go ahead.
Eric Brown, 638 Scott. First of all, the order is unconstitutional. Even if we had a serious situation right now, it would be up to people to do this on their own, it should not be forced by the government. That has been the case all along. And all I go, what Mr. Bennett said, the numbers are not to be believed, but one number we know that can be believed is hospitalizations here locally. We've got one. My understanding is, it's one that's getting ready to be released. So, it seems like we're doing a pretty good job of controlling it with what we've been doing, with our social distancing, choosing to wear masks, avoiding situations, and just using common sense. One thing that's not common sense is this order by the governor at this time. So, the reason that it's been put back to us on a local, and you guys on a local basis, is because you're familiar with the situation locally. The governor made a wide determination, and it's up to us to see, here's what is affecting us locally, in these other counties that have had limited problems or no problems. I just think it's very important that we maintain our rights and our citizens, as citizens, and that we continue to be respectful of one another, but, you know, as a business operator, am I supposed to have a bouncer at my door? Am I going to be fined? Or my customers going to be fined? You know, we need some interpretation of how this would work, and it doesn't seem very feasible to me. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, Will. Okay, come right ahead.
I'm going to take this off right now. My name is Luke Stanford, and 400 Sunset Drive. And I just want to make sure that you're aware that we have responsibility to the community, to the 2% that matter, and I for one would be very concerned if that 2% goes away. I mean, these are grandparents, these are the people we care about, these are elderly people, and young people die from this too, it's not just alone. So, to that point, any life that's lost is a life that matters, and we need to be concerned about that. And I think we should really consider the trend lines are going up. Like, we are doing more testing, obviously, but they're still going up at an exponential rate, and it's very concerning for everyone, and we should be concerned about how it's going up and how we should stop that from going up. And while there are business concerns, the long-term implications of having like a huge outbreak of COVID in Salina would be much more detrimental to these businesses than just wearing masks. Like, if we had some cases like they have in Riley County, or some of those, not Riley, but Sedgwick and other places like that, like the 2,000 or something like that, it'd be very detrimental to all of Salina. Could have even like another shutdown or something, but I was just saying that we should, I urge you to accept this mandate and to make sure that you care about the people of Salina and the people in Saline County, and that make sure that you consider all the lives that are at jeopardy here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Santiago Vasquez, I live on 825 Joni Lane. I also want to come up and say that I am in support of passing this mandate. The reason that it was passed down to us as a county, right, is because we have the most understanding of how cases are going within our county. And right now, our statistics are showing that those numbers are going up, right? Whether or not this is simply because there are more tests isn't a relevant question because the truth is that these are cases that are confirmed of COVID within our community, right? So, that's the important thing here. We are not talking about the other counties and whether or not this mandate disproportionately affects them, we are talking about what is happening in Saline County. What we see here is that our current measures are simply not doing enough, and that more testing and more scrutinization has shown that we are not doing enough to prevent an increase in this outbreak, right? I know I have heard other people come here and talk about how this is very similar to the flu. Once again, that is a false statement, right? If you look at Harvard Medical School and the fact that they found that in an average week of COVID deaths, there was 20 times more deaths than in the highest week of flu deaths, right? And that's the fact that COVID is not only a new virus that is constantly mutating, but also in the fact that it is something that we still don't have any answer for on a medical level. Looking to history, at any other outbreak of viruses that there have been, it has not been science and vaccines that stopped the virus or protect the people, but instead, public health measures like wearing masks, like quarantine, like making sure that we're washing hands and have proper sanitization, right? What we can do now, as individuals, to make sure that we protect our community, is to take up our personal responsibility to make sure that we are sanitized and protecting other members of the community, not sitting around and waiting for people, you know, to create a new vaccine because we don't know how long that's going to take. These are all huge issues that we need to be addressing right now, right? So, we've already seen that, one, you can't compare COVID to the flu considering that in the short time it's been around, it's already killing about 20 times more people per week than the flu does in its most active week. Second, the talk about personal freedom, right? There is a personal freedom to be healthy, and to expect other people to protect your freedom to be healthy, especially people who have an older age or are particularly at risk, right? The people who cannot wear masks have provisions to them done already in the policy. We should have a way of making sure that people are always wearing their masks if they can, right? How big of an inconvenience is it to you to put on a piece of cloth on your face? Like, sure, it sucks a little bit, but obviously, it's not that big of an inconvenience. Additionally, we need to remember the fact that, like, you can't come up here and simply talk conjecture, right? So, I've heard a lot of the arguments come up here and state things like, oh, they're making money off of people going on ventilators. That argument makes exactly zero sense because the point of wearing masks, right, is to have less people in hospitals. So, this would go counter to the idea that we would want to be making money off of COVID cases in some way. I didn't truly understand what the point of that argument was. But yeah, I just want to come up here and continue advocating in support of having a mandate. We should be talking about how to enforce the mandate, right, considering that we are our community and have the best idea of how to make sure that we're keeping people safe. So, if there's going to be any talk about how to make this mandate better, it should be in talking about how we're going to enforce this on a local level. That's where the argument should be. So, yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else before we bring it back up here? If not, that will close the public portion of our meeting. I have a question for our administrator. Today, at 1:00, the State Finance Committee met, and which I understand, I'm sure most of you know, but they are, that is the committee that was produced to be able to override any governor's decisions or mandates, I think. Was there anything that came out of that meeting?
There was, sorry, turn my mic back on. Philip Smith Haines County Administrator. There was nothing that came out of that meeting, Commissioner. Health Director Tiller and I listened to the entire thing, and there was a debate, I think fairly similar to what you've heard here this evening, and I will say, I know from chatter on the listservs today that this debate is going on around the state tonight. I know Johnson County Commission met earlier today, Sedgwick County Commission, I believe, is meeting right now, and a number of other, I've got probably close to two dozen here of folks that either have taken an action or were scheduled to take an action, so. But nothing happened at the Finance Council.
That brings me to just a statement on my own, but I would hope that Saline County doesn't react either way, according to what Sedgwick County did, or Ottawa County, or Wyandotte County, or any other county. I hope we, as commissioners, make the decision based on what we think is best for our county, which is what this, the one provision in this does, that allows us to do that for our county. I'd like to ask our County Counselor, Mike Montoya, to please come forward for a question or two. As I've read this and looked at it, from an interpretation standpoint, if this meeting right now were being held tomorrow, and we, and the mandate stood, we would all be required to wear a mask in this building at this time. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it's important to understand on the executive order, that there is a provision in Hospital 2106 that allows you to decide whether or not you want to adopt that. And the important part of that provision is, is that you are to consult with your local health officer. And based upon the recommendation of the local health officer is what determines whether or not you implement that executive order. And if the local health officer decides it's not necessary to do that to protect the health and safety of the county, then you do not implement that order. And so, there is a lot of reliance upon the local health officer in addressing these issues, which is what we're supposed to do, is place our reliance upon that particular position. This order in and of itself, though, is kind of interesting, and I think Phil's done a good job of going through and outlining the issues that are there, and I think the presentations this evening have also done that. You know, you've heard several comments on both sides of the issue, and I think what's uniform to those is, you know, you're driving down the interstate at 130 miles an hour, you can't do that, you're going to get a ticket. The other issue was, if I let my yard grow, and it grows and grows, the city's going to come by, I'm going to get a warning, and then I'm going to get a ticket. All of these things that they're talking about, whether you're on either side in this case, deals with enforcement and the ability to make certain that the executive order is being adhered to. And the concern was, in this case, is how are you going to do that? If you're in Dillon's and somebody isn't wearing a mask and two other people are, and they get upset with each other, and they say, how come you don't have a mask on? Maybe there's a pre-existing health condition, and they can't wear a mask. That's an exemption under this proposed order. How are we going to know that? Is there going to be, you know, something handed out each time they go into this public establishment that says you have an exemption? The exemptions are for a physical disability, a mental disability. Does that mean that if in your mind, you're just not comfortable wearing a mask? Is that sufficient enough to be a mental disability? I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't think there's anything within the executive order that's going to give you an answer to that question. It does, however, give individuals essentially the opportunity to argue that it's not necessary for them to wear a mask under this existing order. So, then you're running that same problem when you have an establishment, a business, where they're letting somebody in the door. Do they make that determination as to whether or not they meet that exemption? Is there going to be a test to determine whether or not they meet a particular exemption before they get in? Those are all issues that would need to be addressed as part of this executive order. And then, once it gets to that point and you have these exemptions, who's going to enforce it? You can't call the Sheriff's Department, it's not a criminal issue. Are you going to file civil litigation, and how long is that going to take to prove whether or not that individual that chose not to wear a mask met one of those particular exemptions? And so, and you know me, I mean, there's different sides of the fence. I happen to be a huge advocate of wearing a mask. I think it's very important, I recognize that. We have different opinions in our own family as to whether or not you should be required to wear a mask. But setting aside all of those arguments, I think the issue before the board today is whether or not Mr. Tiller feels this particular order is something that is going to protect the health and safety of the citizens of the county, and whether or not that's something that's going to be enforceable. Is there another order that can be drafted by the county to put in place to create some form of enforceability? That's probably something that you may want to look at down the road, it's not something that's before you today. What's before you today is whether or not there's a recommendation on the part of the local health officer that tells you whether or not you should deviate from this order.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Montoya from the commissioners? If not, thank you very much. I'll tell you, I have received more calls and emails since 3:00 today. They are tenfold more than I have received in three and a half years of being a commissioner. So, obviously, the hot button has been pushed. And they were about 50/50, I'll tell you that. They were, you know, everyone was either flat for it or flat against it. So, on June 15th, or somewhere in that neighborhood, when we decided to move from Phase 1 to Phase 2, or we could have opted out and went, opened up the county. My vote was to go to Phase 2 and not open up the county. I was called a moron, an idiot, stupid, some other things I won't even tell you about. But, you know, I guess that's America, we can do that. But I have an extreme difficulty here tonight in making this health decision, if you will. And I think it is extremely health-related. I do not have a health degree. And from that standpoint, maybe if some of them are right, maybe I am stupid. But, any rate, I want my other fellow commissioners to have a say here, so, if they have a say.
I'll just respond to a couple of the comments that were said by our citizens. I understand that the numbers have gone up, and I'm concerned with that also, and I'm not saying I'm going to vote on this at all, but I think we're naive in thinking that we ever did really shut down the economy. I think when somebody says that we opened it up and these numbers went up, we never did. We never shut down Walmart, we never shut down Target, we never shut down Lowe's. Lowe's is busier than they've ever been since they opened. We never shut down Ace, we never shut down Menards. The economy was open. We shut down small businesses that aren't politically important, and to give us a sense of safety. So, I respectfully disagree that the numbers are up because, oh, all of a sudden, people could go out. They always could go out. The other comment that caught my attention is when somebody says that if you disagree with them, it's a lack of knowledge. That's not true. People can disagree respectfully and have the knowledge, and I've always been offended when somebody says, oh, once we give you the facts, you'll change your mind. And I disagree with that. I have the facts on this, and if I vote one way or another, and I disagree with you, it's not because it's a lack of knowledge for me, or that I'm acting politically. Those are my two points for just comments that. Those are my two points for just comments that came, came up tonight.
I want to just comment on, kind of same as Mr. Chair here, is that I've received more emails in the last two days than I have in three and a half years, yep. Until 11:00 this morning, it was about 3 to 1, 3 against versus 4. By 4:00 this afternoon, it was tied 18 to 18. I mean, it's, I got 36 deals. I mean, that many more people had got on this afternoon, about four, wearing a mask. My thing is that it's like, I, sometimes I feel like wearing a mask really isn't what, not what caused this, or could stop it. What has happened is the whole, our economy around, and I'll say "economy" because just a few weeks ago, our city golf club had a tournament. People were here from all over the country because everybody else's country club or everybody else's golf tournaments were closed, and they could travel clear to Slade, Kansas, to be open here. So they was in this golf tournament, and with people here from all over the country. And it shocked me that this was even going on. I'm, I'm thinking, are you kidding me? But I'm sure that they had their people out there taking tests to see if anybody was... But I'm sure they didn't check everyone to say, "Yes, you're COVIDed," or not. I mean, that wasn't going on. But it just bothers me, just in the last few days of what's happened, where some of these people were at a, and I've just been to two funerals here this in the last three days. And, and I noticed they're very relaxed, not a lot of people wearing masks, not a lot of, not a lot of hand sanitizer stuffs around like it was before. There's a lot of relaxing going on in all facets of it, whether we did it to ourselves or whatever. But it is interesting, it's just like a lot of other politically stuff, is that I don't feel that we could control this no better than we could when the first, it first started about wearing your seat belts. It took years and years and years for people to start wearing seat belts. I mean, yep, you could get a ticket, but it was years before they ever enforced that law. It was years before they actually started ticketing you for it. So I, I think here, it's another one of those issues that I think that, I, I feel that we should kind of put the brakes on this just a little bit to find out what's the legal ramifications here. Can we really do this? Can we not? Who's going to enforce it? Who's not? And even if we brought that back on Tuesday morning to have this vote, I, but here, it's, there's a whole lot of other big questions here that, that, that I don't feel comfortable with sitting back and saying yea or nay, either one, because there's, there's a lot of uncertainty here. But that's how I feel. Go ahead.
Well, it's evident that there's a difference of opinions out there. In my own family, there's a difference of opinion of, of what is right and what is wrong when it comes to this. But the one thing, when, when we have our discussions and our, sometimes they get a little hot, but, but I, I end it all that, that we are a family, and, and we love each other, and we want what's best for each other. And I hope, there's, when this vote's going to take place, some of you are going to be happy with the results, and some of you aren't. But remember, when you leave this room, we're all Saline County citizens, and we should have each other's best interest at heart.
Mr. White?
Yes. Anybody that knows me and my electronic ability, it's slim to none, but for some reason, my electronic device was smoking today from all of the correspondence I was receiving, and I greatly appreciate everybody's input. And a few years being a county commissioner, this is kind of like every other issue. It's damned if you do or damned if you don't. It's an extremely emotional issue, and bottom line is, we can take all the public comments that there are out there, but that order came from the Gov. and specifically mentions our health officer and his recommendations. So I'd like to put Mr. Tiller on the spot and get his opinion, because he's the expert in making recommendations for the board.
Well, we've, we've got an order of process for that, and it's not just yet.
Okay.
Well, we're, we're going to ask that opinion, but not just yet, so.
That'd be fine, as long as it gets asked. I'd appreciate it.
It will be asked. I, I want to expand just a hair on, on what Commissioner Wees said. Most of you out here don't know it, but I officiated thousands of basketball games. And when I blew that whistle, somebody was not very happy with me. And somebody liked it. And I know that's what's going to happen here tonight. Some are, some are not going to like it, and some are, so. And, and to echo Jim's comments, we still need to be a community. I, I am too an advocate of wearing the mask, and that's why I asked the question I did at Mr. Montoya a little bit ago, but will it be necessary to wear it? I mean, I'm social distancing all the time, but the mask is another step. The executive order from the governor has a lot of holes in it, and I, and I acknowledge that. But, you know, we've got a, we've got, something's going to happen here. We've got two choices before us. We've got the executive order from the governor, and we've got what this is, a public health order of Saline County Commission. And this has not been approved, it's just, I'm going to read it to you. This is our option. And I want the commissioners, I think, have got a copy of this, but I want the, the public to hear it. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners is authorized pursuant to KSA 2019 Supplemental 48925, as amended by House Bill 2016 in the 2020 Special Legislative Session, to issue an order relating to public health that includes provisions that are less stringent than the provisions of an executive order effective statewide issued by the governor. And whereas on July the 2nd, 2020, Governor Laura Kelly issued Executive Order 20-52 relating to the wearing of masks statewide, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners has consulted with the local health officer regarding the executives, the governor's executive order, and whereas following such consultation, the Board of Commissioners finds that implementation of the full scope of the provisions in the governor's executive order is not necessary to protect the public health and safety within Saline County. And whereas the governor's order lists a number of exceptions which create ambiguity in its requirements and place an undue burden on local businesses and units of government in interpreting when mask-wearing may be avoided. And whereas the governor's order is unclear about the provisions of enforcement and leaves wide discretion to prosecuting attorneys likely resulting in significant variations in enforceable, enforcement statewide, and whereas the ambiguities, I wish we hadn't put all those big words in there, within the governor's order are likely to lead to conflicts between persons, which will place an undue burden on local law enforcement. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners believes clarity is essential in order for the public to comply with the public requirements, public health requirements. Now, therefore, it be ordered by the Board of County Commissioners pursuant to have authorities and findings that the following rules be in effect for Saline County effective at 12:01 a.m. on July the 3rd, 2020, and that these rules will replace Executive Order 20-1552 within Saline County. Number one, use of cloth face coverings will not be legally mandated within Saline County. Number two, individuals are highly encouraged to make responsible individual choices about wearing cloth face coverings within buildings and in outdoor situations when social distancing cannot be maintained in order to protect themselves and others from the transmission of COVID-19. Number three, businesses are encouraged to set rules to protect their employees and customers, which may include mandating mask usage within their place of business in situations where doing so may help prevent the transmission of COVID-19. And that is the end of the order that will be voted upon, one way or the other. And at this time, I will call on our Health Department Executive, Jason Tiller, to give the commission his recommendation.
So the time has come. I have been...
By the way, let me state this. His recommendation is that a recommendation. We still have to vote on it. We still have to make the decision, so.
So first thing I want to say is thank you to everybody for your comments that you have made here tonight, for the emails and the phone calls, both for and against your candor and your commitment to this community. Funny thing is, I've had all of those same arguments with myself for the last week, back and forth. I've wrestled with this, and I've lost sleep over it, because foundationally, I believe that people have a right to autonomy and self-governance. However, I do believe that what we are currently seeing without some sort of change is still going to, continue to worsen. And even with the holes that, and some of the challenges that this executive order has, I think to move forward and do nothing is probably not our best option. If you do decide to adopt the executive order, I would caveat that, though, that we need to revisit this discussion and see how things have changed in the next two to three weeks. If you decide not to adapt, adopt the executive order and go with the public health order, then I think that it needs to be with strong recommendations from all levels of leadership, not just the county commissioners, but we need to further engage the city commissions and our USD partners in wearing those masks, and probably setting better examples than we sometimes do. So I don't know if that's what you're looking for in terms of recommendation, but this is a hard...
Well, I'm looking for recommendation A or B. That's what I'm looking for.
I know, this has been, even during listening to the comments, it is, it has been a difficult decision. But I do think that even if it's for a short period of time, my recommendation would be that we need to have some sort of rule for masks. So I guess then my final recommendation, since I don't have a, a ability to phone a friend or anything left, would be that we adopt the executive order as it is, with the caveat that we would review where we stand in the next two to three weeks.
Do we have the ability to put a caveat on this at this time? I'll ask Mr. Montoya.
Yeah, I'll get Mike to weigh in, but my reading of House Bill 2016 gives you all the ability to make findings that you would like to do a less stringent public health order than anything the governor has propagated. It doesn't say you only get one bite at that apple, so I don't see any reason that you couldn't revisit this in the future.
I agree with that. Okay. So, Jason, then, but we still have to go. You're, you're saying that you would prefer that we went with the executive order with a caveat? Or are you saying that we need to go with the public health order of the Saline County Commission with a caveat? Which, I mean, we need our direction from you.
I know.
I mean, we need, that was the intent here.
Chairman, with all due respect, Pete Davis.
Just, we're not taking public comments right now. We're not taking public comments, sir.
That may be.
Okay. I will have you removed if, if you want to continue.
I know, I'm just pointing that out.
Okay. Jason, go ahead.
So what I said was, I recommend that we adopt, even with its current flaws, the executive order 2052, with the caveat that we will review this thing again in the next two to three weeks.
Which we can do at any time.
Yeah, we can choose.
I mean, I'm not so sure that, I'm not saying how I'm going to vote, but I'm not so sure that that has to even be put in the motion.
I, I, I would have to agree. And our two alternatives are, if, if we so do approve RFA 18620, consideration of governor's executive order, we don't have to do anything. We just, we walk away, and it goes into effect at 12:01 tonight. Option number two is to move to the, adopt the alternative order as provided by staff. Now, I'll look for comments or question or nothing from the commission.
I'm still worried about enforcement, and I don't know whether the conversation goes to, with the commission, or it goes to Mr. Tiller, or county counselor, or whatever. But if this passes tonight, everybody knows that I have a business, and there will be no civil disobedience in, in my business. I have no problem with following the law, even if I disagree with it. But I, I think I'd like to know, again, if somebody is not coming in, who do we call? Who do I ask to enforce it? I mean, what are the procedures there that, that a business would go through to get that person to enforce the law? And I'm leaving, leaving this up to anybody, so I just don't know.
I'll try and take a stab at that, and then maybe Mike can bail me out if I get tongue-tied. But I, I think that is the central, from my standpoint, Commissioner, that is the central problem with the governor's order. Whether you, I mean, I, again, I'm a mask wearer, I, you know, that's, that's not the issue. Whether you love or don't like masks, this executive order really has no provisions for what you do. There is no, to quote Jason Phone a Friend. You cannot call Salina PD unless there's something, you know, unless it evolves into an altercation or something like that. I mean, if it's, if it's just an issue of a mask, the, the, the enforcement provisions according to this executive order, and as provided under the, the House bill, is a civil suit brought by the county attorney. And you, you may be aware that the court system is not operating at a speedy clip right at the moment. So I'm not sure how effective that would be, even if that were a priority enforcement action for the county attorney. So, you know, I, I think really, you know, I, in reference to the chairman's question earlier, I said nothing happened at the State Finance Council, and that's true, nothing ultimately happened, but there was a lot of discussion. And one of the pieces of discussion was one of the senators who said, "Well, really, this is just a strong recommendation, because there is no teeth to this thing." And so, you know, I, I share your concern about what a business owner, or frankly, as the person who is in charge of half of this building, what our staff would be expected to do if somebody comes in without a mask. You know, I mean, I, I think that is a, is a serious hole in the governor's executive order. I don't know how we change that, given the state of the, of the current law at the state level.
Okay. With that having been said, then, if I do not receive a motion from anyone speaking alternately, RFA 186-20, consideration of the governor's executive order 20-52, will go into effect if I do not receive a motion.
If we had more time, the libertarian part of me is, is definitely leaning towards not doing anything. I think I maybe could be talked into something in between, but it doesn't seem to me that we have that time, nor do we have that option tonight. So, Mr. Chair, I'll just throw it out there. I move we adopt the alternative order as provided by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we move to adopt the alternative order as provided by staff. Are there any further comments or questions?
I have a question for Administrator. I can't call a friend and ask, advise, ask his advice on how I vote, but I can ask your opinion.
Well, Mr. Commissioner, I don't offer opinions on political decisions of the body that I work for. I'll support what the majority of this commission does either way, as I believe our public health officer and our county counselor... health officer and our county counselor will.
Thank you, sir.
Point of, of order here for Mr. Montoya?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that the motion, my understanding of Mr. Tiller's recommendation is, is to implement the governor's executive order.
Correct.
And if the motion is to adopt the resolution that's before you, which it would be to...
Would be the alternative order by the staff.
The alternative order, which is the public health order of Saline County Commission, which is the alternative to the, to the governor's executive order.
So by doing that, you're not going to adopt the governor's executive order?
That would be correct.
That would be my, that would be my motion. If I did not make that clear, I apologize.
And if you are not going to adopt the governor's executive order, that would be against what Mr. Tiller's recommendation is.
That'd be correct again. That's why I...
And House Bill 2106 indicates that you can take, you can, you can decide to not implement the governor's order based upon consultation with Mr. Tiller and his recommendation, that it would not adversely affect the public health and safety of the county. And it seems to me that if you are going to not enforce the governor's executive order, you're going against the recommendation of Mr. Tiller. And so you would not be able to make a finding to do that, if that's what you're trying to do.
Well, Mike, I guess, I mean, we're splitting hairs here, but I would say what the law requires is consultation.
Right.
It does not refer to a recommendation from the public health officer. It says after consultation, they make those findings, and so...
And so that's what I want to make sure of, is that you're making specific findings if you're going to do that, given the consultation that you've had with the local health officer. So you need to make findings when you make your decision to do this.
Are you asking me to say that my concerns are about enforcement?
Correct. You need to make specific findings to do that.
Do I need to amend my motion?
I would think so.
Okay. I amend my motion to say that this, I am concerned about the enforcement of this action, and I think it places an undue burden on local businesses.
And I second the motion.
All right. The amended motion is that we adopt the alternative order as provided by staff with consideration for, say it again, Monty.
Because of concerns about enforcement and undue burden on businesses.
There you go. Okay. Are we clear on that, Jamie? Are there any further comments or questions? All of those in the favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Mike, I didn't, and nay? I am nay. So the motion carries four to one. And anyone else have anything for the, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, can, can I read a statement?
Yeah, I wish you'd have done so before, but go ahead.
Well, I, I didn't have a chance to interject or know quite when to. But I, I want to acknowledge the different, differing messages we have received early on from our government medical advisors regarding the effectiveness of mask-wearing and the spread of coronavirus. In this unprecedented time, it has been difficult to know what to do, and this confusion has contributed to the polarization effect of this issue. Given the current context and the most recent understanding of the virus and how it spreads, I believe it to be our social responsibility to do everything in our power to slow and/or stop the spread of this easily transferable and deadly virus. I also believe that it is my responsibility as a county commissioner to make educated choices based on recommendations by medical professionals and in line with my conscience. That being said, I support the proper use of masks when in the public and during situations where six feet of social distancing, distancing is not possible. If we do not wear masks, I fear that we'll be stepping, taking a step back to Phase 1 or 2 with higher and more serious restrictions and more economic damage. At this time, the most patriotic thing that we could do as citizens of this country is to protect the health and the well-being and not only ourselves but of our neighbors, especially on this, the most important national holiday weekend. Just as we have done in the past during national and global crises in our history, I am confident we can come together to fight this invisible and deadly enemy. But due to the ambiguity and the mandate regarding the logistical support and recommendations of application, I cannot support the governor's mandate. The state is attempting to put mandates on the county that is unfunded and not properly supported. If the state could give guidance and support on how to implement and manage the mandate, I am happy to reconsider my position.
All right. I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you for attending.